All right, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Tumwater City Council Work Session. And I will will do roll call. I think we have all council members here except for council member. Kathy and she should probably be showing up momentarily. So we will go ahead and get started. Um, first item on the agenda is the new medic unit proposal briefing and Chief Hurley will be presenting. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. All right, is everybody seeing the presentation? Great, thank you. So tonight I'm going to talk a little bit about Thurston County Medic One and uh some things going on there that are pretty exciting that involve the Tumwater City Tumwater and our fire department. And that's the addition of a new medic unit in the county. I just wanted to start off with a reminder of our fifty-year partnership with Thurston County Medic One. Um, you know, it's been since nineteen seventy-four. Uh, this group of folks here was uh so are basically our first paid employees in Tumwater. And that all happened through a partnership with Medic One in nineteen seventy-four. Um, certainly, some of the folks here may may recognize some individuals in the photos on the far left is uh our previous fire chief Rick Sap as part of that that first group. Also interesting, you can see on the unit there the number you had to call for assistance at the time. This was before uh before nine one one. So uh to get right into the issue, Medic One tracks uh and it tracks response times uh each year. And I'm referring specifically to paramedic unit advanced life support response times. So uh the paramedic units in the county. In past work groups, uh the EMS council has identified that when response time compliance drops below ninety percent, that's uh the indicator that a new unit needs to be added in the county. We're looking specifically at the urban area in the county in this chart and uh the response time data has been trending slightly downward and it's projected uh to to continue going uh lower in the uh urban area. And you can see we're at in a uh we're just approaching or at ninety percent right now. So we want to get ahead of this because of the time it takes to to stand a unit up. And as a reminder, um right now, there are seven paramedic units in the county. I apologize, this isn't the best visual, but uh it shows where those seven medic units are located. Uh, we have Medic Five here at the headquarters station in Tumwater and there'll be a another map here in the minute in a minute that'll be a little more clear. Um, we also have Medic fourteen uh in the Rochester area uh that we support. And if you see Medic Two there in the bottom right southeast, um Lacey Fire District Three actually administers uh that that unit. So here's a little better look at where the units are right now. And this is just the the cities of Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater here. Um, you can see Medic Ten is on the west side of Olympia. Medic Four is actually over in the uh Lily Road area. Medic Three is at their headquarters station in Lacey near Saint Martins and Medic Six is out uh by the rack on Silicon Road. So those are the existing urban units. Uh, the blue marks are fire stations. There are sites that potentially could uh house another medic unit. Um, so their Medic One wanted to do an analysis uh kind of objectively through the data to see which unit or I'm sorry, which station would make the most sense. So th- there's a lot more to it than I'm going to show you tonight, but this is the broad overview. Uh, two thousand and twenty-three, there were just over eleven thousand paramedic. Again, this is just advanced life support responses in the county. Um, they actually considered sixteen suitable facilities at list nineteen there. And then basically looked at an incident uh from the two thousand and twenty-three data and use GIS to do a drive time analysis from each of those sixteen candidates to that call. And you can imagine it took took a few days to run this recursive analysis and the county GIS staff um did this work. What it showed was the top three locations uh recommended were Station T Two in Tumwater, Station Thirty-three in Lacey, and Station O One in downtown Olympia in that order. They also did a separate analysis looking at just calls in the urban area. The that was about seven thousand calls and and it came up with the same result in that in that iteration. This visual helps see uh the yellow are those three, T Two, O One, and Station Thirty-three. It also shows areas in the county where we really have kind of hotspots with regards to call volume. Uh, West Olympia, uh the area um in downtown Olympia, Lily Road because of all the care facilities out there. And there's another spot kind of lower middle there that's uh ki- kind of uh in Telco area where there are some care facilities uh in Lacey as well. So from the analysis, it showed, you know, that T Two was the best location and some of the reasons for that are really access, really the main reason for that. Where T Two is located, it's able to get into downtown Olympia and support that area. It's able to head south on ninety-nine, has good access to I five and good access to Highway one oh one and Black Lake. It's it's situated where it can uh can respond to multiple areas and support uh a good part of the uh of the system. I've got just a few more slides here to talk about what this might mean for us uh opportunities. It certainly aligns with our uh public safety uh priorities and goals in the city, continues to enhance our longstanding relationship with Medic One. It also would mean, and I'll get uh a bit more into this in a second, um it means that our daily minimum staffing in the city would increase by two personnel. That would certainly on a medic unit enhance paramedic response times within the city and paramedic availability in the city as well. But remember those uh that's those staff members are also firefighters. They enhance our firefighting response in the city. And really, one of the key things is we're better able to assemble what's called an effective response force. And that means we should have around sixteen people on the scene of a structure fire within eight minutes. And um later, I'll be presenting to you some data from our our strategic strategic planning and study work we've done that shows how we're deficient in uh in that area. Uh, and certainly this added staffing is one of the factors that would help us continue to improve on our our WSRB rating, which affects insurance rates. Uh, challenges certainly, uh hiring and staffing, you know, this would require uh hiring about nine firefighter paramedics. Um, it's a hi- it's a challenging environment for hiring paramedics right now. We've seen a bit of improvement. Um, Medic One is making a a valiant effort in bringing candidates and paying for their travel and stay to come in from out of state. And they'll continue to do that. So we have seen more applicants lately, which is encouraging. Uh, another challenge would be station improvements at Station T Two. That station uh it was designed to be expanded, but right now isn't situated to uh to staff as many people uh efficiently uh uh that we would need to staff there uh in the future. So we've got some work going on looking at at that at how that might be impacted as well. And kind of finish up here talking about budget. Um, and right now, um what we're talking about is really entering into negotiations with with Medic One for uh an amendment to our existing advanced life support contract which runs through next year. Um, but there's really some some basic funding funding formulas that are already laid out in the agreements uh in that for you know, the the calculated figures, nine and a half employees, Medic One will support per unit. And they would pay eighty percent of compensation benefits and equipment for that staff. They also make annual payments uh which they currently make, but they would be increased for unit management, office space, and storage space. And as a reminder, Medic One buys the medic units, equips them, and maintains them. So there's no cost to the city for uh for that. The city's share would be basically the equivalent of two firefighter paramedics. We would hire nine. The city would basically fund two. Uh, we would also share in twenty percent of the cost of equipping that new staff. And we would shoulder the costs of if there are new employees that need to go to a fire training academy, we would shoulder that cost as well. So really, to wrap things up here, um a very tentative timeline, uh we have our briefing tonight. Uh, we would uh through May and the rest of May and June be talking to Medic One about what a contract amendment might look like. Um, we would, if we had a tentative agreement, if we're able to come to one, we likely would bring that to public health and safety in July. Um, and then possibly back to council for action on an amendment in uh July or August. And I know we have the council recess, so we have to work around that. Uh, Medic One has indicated it'd probably be August and September. The Board of County Commissioners would consider the amendment if approved. Um, we would, we would start that recruitment hiring process towards the end of the year. Twenty twenty-five would involve continued recruiting, hiring, fire training academy, uh looking at Station T Two improvements with a goal of having that unit in service by January one, twenty twenty-six, so. With that, this is just the staff for Medic One that uh hang on here, the staff for Medic One that uh that worked on this, and I am going to stop my screen sharing right now.
Uh, council member Altosier?
Thanks, Mayor, and uh thanks, Chief. This is a pretty exciting opportunity, exciting development. Um, I I guess my question is is more, I guess, fiscal on on our end would if we approve a contract amendment and we're funding two new FTEs, you know, that's not an insignificant expenditure, would we have to amend the budget or just build that into the next budget since we would engage in hiring? It would take a while to hire anyone. Like, how how does it work with our existing budget? Does it go into the year-end wrap-up that we do sometimes, or would we actually have to do a budget amendment corresponding with a contract amendment?
Well, I'll take a shot at that and certainly uh city administrator and finance director can chime in as well. Um, you know, the idea I think would be this would be wrapped up in our twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget. Um, if you know, I don't, we'll have to see how the negotiations with with Medic One go with regards to any hiring in two thousand and twenty-four related to this. But I believe the basic plan would be for the next biennium that uh it would be included in that.
Okay, since neither Troy nor Lisa have responded, I take it to mean that was the right thing. And uh
Great answer.
Yeah, for the system improvement, it's not the facility improvements. Um, does that mean expansion of like footprint, or does that mean a reorganization of the inside and uh rejiggering of how the space works? Are we talking about actually constructing more physical space in order to accommodate more people at T Two?
That's a great question, and we're having that discussion right now with uh with facilities. Uh, we got meeting a couple of weeks with finance facilities, everybody to talk that through. It could be um again, Medic One, I didn't, I don't think I mentioned this. They have indicated a willingness to share in costs of basically what they would call tenant improvements. Um, but there's also a recognition that to so like backup, so there could be could be a temporary solution, but I think we would have to keep in mind that we would have to expand the footprint of that station to fully, fully, um, you know, uh, staff the five people that would be there. Plus, we wouldn't, you know, need to be able to flex up to probably seven or eight with staffing there. And really, one of the main limitations we run into is just the the bathroom facilities there were not set up for that many people. Um, and I I would mention, we do have drawings uh from the mid nineties for that station that actually showed in addition to the south end of that station. Uh, the way it was laid out, it was anticipated that it would be expanded someday.
Great. Thank you for answering my questions. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Swartup?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so um as far as the medic one piece of it, you're talking about equipment or will we, will this require having more medic units as far as the physical um units that they actually drive around in? Um, how does that affect that? Do we need more of those as well?
Yes, there there would be a new primary unit for that eighth medic unit. Um, right now, we have um with Medic Five and Medic fourteen, we also have a backup unit for each of those. As you can imagine, if the unit breaks down, we need to be able to get right into another one. Um, we haven't fully um discussed this yet, but our idea is that we wouldn't need another backup unit because we would already have one in the city. So likely, it would be one more vehicle that we would acquire. Again, Medic One would would pay for that.
Councilmember Doffler?
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, a while ago, when there were talks about projecting needs for additional stations, how does that play in with like when medics trying to find a location? Do you have like on the back burner, like there's been talk in the past about needing another station over by S P S C C? Does that play into any of this of like future forecasting of need?
Not in this analysis. They Medic One really looked at where there are existing fire stations just because of the timeline to stand this up. Um, it doesn't mean that kind of analysis won't be happening moving forward. Um, we have some some talks going on about there's some really great uh software out there right now and and consulting groups that have some pretty amazing products where we could look at, you know, kind of future casting. What would happen if we put a station in a new location and how it would impact all this? But right now, the analysis was just for existing locations.
Got it. Thanks, Chief.
Any other questions? All right, great. This won't be the last time I'll be hearing about this and hopefully the negotiations go well with Medic One, so. All right, with that, we will move on to uh uh Minfin two oh one expenditures and um Finance Director Troy Neymar Neymar will go ahead and present.
Thank you, and working on sharing the screen here. Oh, there we go. Okay, should be able to see that now?
Yes, we do.
Right. So good to see everybody and welcome to Municipal Finance two oh one expenditures. This is the second in a series of four uh educational sessions that we're uh putting on for you. And um, you know, on the on the surface, when I started thinking about this, um expenditures seemed pretty straightforward. You know, we buy something and we pay for something and that's an expenditure. Uh, but of course, this is government and it's a little more complicated than that. And so um, so I'm trying, I tried to figure out, you know, what would be useful for you to know, and I think it all starts with funds. And so um, you'll recall last time uh in the revenue presentation, we talked about funds. And now we're going to talk about funds today. And when we do the budget presentation, we're going to talk about funds again. Um, and so it's all about funds for us in government. And um, we have twenty-eight of them at the moment that we uh budget for and spend money out of. And uh, we'll go over those in a second, actually. Um, soon to be twenty-nine, assuming that um you all approve a um the the uh public safety sales tax fund uh at your meeting next week. Um, then we'll be up to twenty-nine. And then if you throw in um the Metropolitan Parks District and Transportation Benefit District, that would put us up to thirty-one. But we, those are separate legal entities, so we usually don't count those in our overall account, but they are important. Okay, so in a in a few slides, we'll talk a little bit more about these and why we have so many and what's the purpose. But for now, um, we can take big chunks of these funds and group them into categories. And so on the left here, we've got the general government funds. Um, so these are, these are most of the, you've got the general fund up there, which is big, but then most of these others are pretty small, but they they basically all kind of um support the general government functions, police, fire, community development, um streets and parks and things like that. And then on the right, we have the special revenue funds. And so these are um base basically um specific uh tax uh items that are are designated for specific purposes. Um, so the affordable housing sales tax that that has a, it's a specific funding source and it goes for a very specific purpose. Um, and that's this, the whole group here. Um, this one on the left, it's this one's a little more of a hodgepodge because there's, I didn't want to take up four slides, but um uh, you know, the debt service fund, um, the CFP funds, ERNR, and then the proprietary, which is our utilities. Um, and the golf course, also known as business type funds. And I see a question, Councilmember Kathy. You're muted. You're muted, Councilmember.
Sorry about that. I'll thank you all over again. Um, uh, do you uh want us to ask questions about these as we go along, which or would you rather us wait?
Uh, yeah, go ahead and ask us as we go along. And if if um if it's something that I've got some slides for in the future, I'll just let you know.
Okay, great. Um, could you go back one slide to the uh the thing on domestic violence? Every year, we ask about how those are used, how much is in there, how it gets there, and how it gets out.
Yeah, so for for that one, as I recall, um, and that's that's one we don't have a lot of activity in, uh but I think there's money set aside in there for um for a couple of things. Um, uh, it might, I I believe it's when I first, when I first started working in the city, um, I got a call from some from some attorneys out of Lacey who were dealing with Thurston County Courts and um, it was a situation where there there was a domestic violence charge. And um, it basically, they asked us to, if we would be willing, it was a Tumwater resident. And um, would we be willing to to pay for them to go to treatment um to to help satisfy this domestic violence um charge against them? Um, and so that, we ended up, we we said yes, and then they ended up not following through. But that's that's an example of how those funds might be spent. And there's generally not a lot of money in there. Um, from memory, I think it was ten or fifteen thousand dollars. Um, so it's it's not a big chunk of money, but um it can be helpful.
Do we put that money in by decision of budget work each two years, or do we um or does that come from somewhere automatically a percent into that fund?
I I can try and answer that for you. Um, the money that goes into that account comes um from an assessment um that's made by the court um when they do sentencing for domestic violence cases. That's why the amount is pretty minimal. Um, and then that that those funds are restricted to use for things like treatment and training um for domestic violence. And we um helped sponsor a um domestic violence prevention training several years ago. Um, and there've been other conversations about using that for a kiosk to help people get um domestic or or um no contact orders um and things like that um provide additional information, but they're pretty restricted. And we don't get a lot of funds um each year, so we tend to have to wait for them to accumulate a bit before we can spend them.
That's too bad because I, when I read the police reports, um, there's rarely uh the reports we get uh one once a month, I believe it is. Um, there's, there always seems to be domestic violence situations. So this is uh, you know, this is a high high uh crime and disturbance, whatever you want to call it, it's it's um dangerous. And we have a variety of different groups around the city that um you know, take in people, not not only um, you know, our major ones, but um, others work with domestic violence victims or someone comes to get housing and you discover that they're domestic violence um survivors or whatever. Is there any ways that money could be in there that's not so restricted so we could help i- in the community more?
Um, um, you know, certainly you could have conversations um regarding whether or not you wanted to add um additional funds for the purposes of um domestic violence prevention, but those could just be housed in the general fund. Um, the, as I understand it, the Domestic Violence Fund is specific to the statutory fees that we receive. But Troy might better answer that.
So you're saying we could, we could have a conversation uh here at at council and with all of you staff and see if we want to make it another spot for domestic violence that we could offer more freely to the community? Is that what you're suggesting, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'd I'd like to put that on discussion because domestic violence is now, as as bad as some other things we're concerned about in the community, you know, like hunger and housing and so forth. So or we or have a conversation with a safe place and see where they are right now with with their their load or what the needs are. I just think it's a need in the community that we we shouldn't overlook when we're uh wanting to uh Tumwater's wanting to make a difference, you know, in people's lives. So anyway, thank you, Troy. I I appreciate that.
Sure, no problem. And thank you, Karen, for helping me out there.
Yeah, yeah. Now you and I both know more than we started.
That's right. Uh, okay, I think we're pretty much done with this one. So um, so I wanted to just talk about some some of the key uh takeaways um from the discussion on funds. Um, so when we we um talk about the budget or expenditures in general, um, oftentimes we don't talk about the smaller funds, and there's several reasons for that. Um, you know, some of the, some of the funds only serve one purpose, like the debt service fund. Uh, you know, if we if we owe debt, we put some money in there to make the debt payment, and then the money goes out to pay the debt, and that's it. And so there's just not a lot to talk about with with something like that. Um, some of the funds are really low dollar amount or low activity levels, like the flag fund, for example. We buy a flag for police and a flag for fire each year and uh and that's about it. So it's low dollars, low activity. So you know, when we're proposing, when we're working on the city's budget, there's just not a lot of conversation to be had for some of those funds like that. Utilities, we do talk about a bit more. Um, and um, the point with with these is each utility has its own funding source, um, its own purpose. Uh, they do, they each kind of do one thing. And I mean, they're they're more complicated than that. I'm simplifying, of course, but um, you know, the water fund provides water and it's funded with with user fees and rates and and that's that's about it. So it's fairly straightforward as far as that part goes. Um, and then um other funds, as we've kind of mentioned, have um pretty strict uh rules about um where the money comes from and and how we can spend it. And lodging tax is a great example of that. Um, and then some of them are internally restricted uh from the one of the first slides, like the reserve funds. And then we get to the general fund. And the general fund compared to most is is very complex because there's a lot going on. We have a lot of funding sources, uh mostly taxes, but there's also fees, um, charges for services and things like that. And we do a lot of stuff out of the general fund. So the general fund, um, as you know, covers um all of the the primary government services. Uh, yes, Councilmember Doffler.
Thank you, Troy. One of the questions I recently got from a constituent when they were looking over like our budget and all our different funds is why do we have police and fire in our general fund and not a separate?
That's actually a good question. Um, I I, as I was going through this, I was kind of thinking like, you know, it would it would be a lot easier to budget if they if they all had their own fund. Uh, but that's that's just kind of how cities are set up. Um, the the, that's how our funding is set up for them. Um, you know, for for the most part, um, so I say this with a with a caveat because we know this public safety sales tax is coming, right? But for the most part, we have property tax and we have sales tax, and those are two huge components of our general fund revenue. But they're not specific to any one function. So all of the the major city functions share in that revenue. Um, and there's just not enough um money designated just for one or the other to have them in their in their own funds. Um, so um, that's, yeah, it's just kind of how cities are set up, gen- general government, you know, the general function of a city, the the services that the residents expect and need from a city um are are all designed to come from the general fund. And so there is, and and your question uh is quite timely and lens night. There is, and, and your question uh, is quite timely and lends nicely to my presentation. So thank you. Because it does um. It, it's not that like police and fire are competing against each other, but. There are a lot of competing priorities in the general fund. And that's part of what makes it so challenging on the expenditure side. Is um, you know, we just heard a presentation about the pneumatic one unit, which would be great for the community. It's going to cost some money. Um, you know, we, we know we have a lot of needs in police, uh, which is also going to be great for the community. It's going to cost a lot of money. And so there's. There's just, and of course, our residents want parks, we want nice streets. Um, you know, all these, all these great things that make this a great city. And um, so there's, there's just a lot of uh, really important things that. We have to make some hard decisions about sometimes. And so that's, that's why we spend so much time talking about the general fund. That's why it's so important. And uh, you know, it's not that we're ignoring the other funds, it's just that here, this is where the hard decisions are, are made many times. And. In addition to funding all these important services that people expect. Uh, we also have the support services that help make those happen, you know, IT and HR and payroll and legal. And, and all these other uh, great things. So. It's a, it's a, it's a big one for us, and we spend a lot of time on it, as you know. Oh, and so, okay, we're going to move on from funds and go to um. Uh, kind of, kind of try to answer the question, why do we talk so much about funds? And I'll, I'll kind of answer that question with another question, which is. What is governmental accounting? Um, and governmental accounting is basically fund accounting. Uh, this is, this is used for all types of governments, state, local and federal. Um, it's kind of the way governments uh, are intended to operate. Um, it focuses on main, maintaining tight control of our resources, compartmentalizing them into funds. And that helps uh, provide clarity to the public and shows us uh, how we're directing our resources at various programs. And that's, that's where Councilmember Dahlhoff, I, I was thinking about, gosh, it would sure be easier if we had a police fund and a fire fund separate. Then we could really show how those funds are directed at programs. Uh, but unfortunately, we can't do that. But it does, um, you know, having, having different funds for these different, for, for many of different activities, not all of them. Um, does promote transparency, um, shows how we're doing in terms of performance and um. That we can demonstrate that we're using taxpayer money well and wisely. So then kind of building on that, what, what is a fund? I mean, it seems kind of obvious. We have, we often talk about buckets. Uh, but a fund really is an accounting entity. It's got its own set of accounts. Um, that are self-balancing and we can report on those. And again, targeted for certain activities and objectives. Uh, a fund is not a separate legal entity, um, but we, we definitely treat them kind of as, as separate things. Um, in finance and again, um, helps us with control and monitoring our inflows and outflows and our, our limited resources. A little more about governmental accounting, uh, really it emphasizes budgetary control. And, and that's a big job of the council, as, as you all know, uh, budgets are legally adopted financial plans. And so when. When you pass the, the upcoming budget here in the late fall, um, that becomes a legal document. Uh, that guides uh, our spending and what we do as a city. Also helps us assess performance. You know, we look at budget to actual expenditures, so we know how much we spent, how much we have left to spend. And then um. Uh, as you know, we recently came back, came to council with a budget amendment. Um, so if we identify, if we get a new grant that we didn't anticipate, or, or we identify a different expense, or we're going to. We need to spend more money in an area, uh, we have to come back to council to ask for approval for that. Uh, companies and nonprofits don't have to have budgets. They can, but it's not required. Uh, for, for governments, it's required by law. Okay, another transition, um. Sometimes I think transfers, they seem, this, the word transfer seems kind of obvious, but when you see. A budget and it shows transfers in and transfers out, it's not really obvious what that is. So we have a, a couple of examples to try to shed a little light on that. Um, and we're going to use the, the Metropolitan Parks District and the TBD for these examples. And so. Uh, in the TMPD, we don't spend any money directly out of that fund. Uh, we, it has no employees. Um, that money sits there until uh, Chuck spends the money on a park. Or a restroom at a park or something related to parks that's eligible for that money. And then he calls up finance and says, and says, hey, we spent this money out of the parks fund and we'd like to get reimbursed from the TMPD. He sends us all the documentation and then uh, we transfer that money from the TMPD back to parks. Uh, same thing for the transportation benefit district. That money will, will collect and sit in its fund um, until uh, Brandon says, okay, we finished up the summer paver. Project and we're going to use uh, TBD money to pay for that. And so please do a transfer for me. And then here's kind of what it looks like. Um, so the, you know, in the example one, the, the parks district would show a transfer out, which is the expenditure. And the parks department will show a transfer in, which is uh, the revenue side of it. Uh, same for the TBD, transfer out for the expenditure from the TBD fund. Uh, back into the CFP fund, which paid for the summer paper project, and that would be the revenue. Um, that um, again, helps with budgetary control, helps with compliance. Uh, really makes it easy for us to show our auditors when they come in um, and review our records. That um, because these are, these are restricted funds that kind of are highly visible, high priority stuff, and. We can easily show them um, how we complied with those requirements. And, and the public as well. Okay, and then uh, beyond that, there's, there's several things that we are just mindful of in, in finance and. Kind of the city is, as a whole. Um, we talked about transfers, but interfund charges, those can, those can kind of be transfers, but. Um, again, we just talked about how a fund has its own self-balancing set of accounts. Um, and there's a state law that says um, I, I like how I can summarize this in one very short sentence. Whereas the law itself is paragraphs, uh, but basically says one fund cannot benefit at the expense of another. So um, so if we transfer money between funds, it has to be a fair, equitable, allowable. Um, transaction, each fund has to benefit equally. Uh, and we have an example of that uh, with the general fund. Um, so. Let's say we had an economic downturn and the general fund uh, is kind of running short on money and we would like to have some more. Um, and maybe the water utility is saving up for a big capital project. And so they have some extra money sitting in their fund. The general, the general fund can't just go and take that money. That money is protected by this law. Um. Now, the general fund could um, ask for an interfund loan and uh, would be like getting a loan from a bank. Um, you know, the general fund could borrow the money, they could pay interest, uh, but they can't just take the money. And that, that protect, helps protect. The ratepayers of the utility, um, or, and as well as, you know, whatever fund we might be talking about. So the, and then there are examples where we can, um, we can allocate some allowable costs, like. Uh, again, for the utilities, you know, we have, when you walk in the, the main entrance of city hall, we have um, the folks at the front counter in the finance department that. Uh, do the utility billing and they take in the money from the utilities and things like that. Um, so you know, we can take a prorated share of their salaries and benefits for the work they're doing on behalf of the utilities. Um, and charge that there. But again, it has to be fair and equitable and supported by documentation. And then we also have the gift of public funds doctrine. This is in the constitution, the state constitution. Um, and so basically this, this says the, that the government can't uh, give. Can't make a gift of public funds, can't loan credit, um, except for the necessary support of the poor and infirm. Uh, so uh, this is basically the purpose of this is to prevent public funds from benefiting private companies or private interests. Uh, you know, public money should benefit the public, um, has its primary purpose. And uh, there's um, of course, uh, this has been, so since it's in the constitution, it's been around for a very long time and. Uh, over, over time, there's been people that have run afoul of that law and the courts have come up with kind of a three-step. Process to evaluate that, if it ends up there. We tried not to, we tried to just not get there, and so we would work with legal. And yes, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Troy, is an example is when um, we, Tom Water was able to give the house for homes first for the Oxford House. Is that an example of like? Or land, it's for like habitat for humanity. Is that exact, that's the example you can, because it's for the public good?
Yeah, it's uh, several things. It's, it is for the public good. And so that's kind of the. Well, the, kind of the first two. So does it serve a public purpose? Yes. Um. Is it a fundamental purpose of the government? Kinda, there, we had, we had the ARPA funds at the time that we were spending on that, and that was specifically allowed under uh, under that program. Uh, but yes, it is for the poor and infirm. And so that's the big thing. And I see Karen is going to help me out some more.
Yeah, uh, I was just going to jump in here because actually the two examples you gave are both specifically allowed by statute. So they are both a little bit different than this general principle.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Councilmember Kathy?
Yeah, along the same line, I was going to ask, so what qualifies as poor and infirm that we could use some money for? Because we're. Like our program to help people with their utility bills are because of donations. That people make, you know, when they pay their bills or whatever, but I don't think that's the same thing.
Uh, it's, the, yeah, that's, that's a little different because we're. Well, it's, it's kind of the same thing. So yes, it is um. Before I, before I say anything, I'll just let Karen jump in, since she already turned herself, turned her camera on.
I apologize. Um, again, um, those programs are allowed in statute, so those are specifically um, addressed. But typically, um, the same principles apply, um. A- as we use for those programs, it, we look at a percentage or a median, you know, medium household income. Um, and we look at the low uh, or the very low, and we incorporate those often into our human services contracts. Um, so that's the way that we um, generally look at that issue.
So what would be an example of how we would use that money? Do, have we done that, Karen?
Uh, I think we, we have quite a few human services contracts, yes, where we've used um, the eighty percent. Or, you know. Brad could, if Brad were here, he could tell you exactly, um, because my memory doesn't work that way. But we um, we use HUD standards and other standards that are, Michael probably could also. Councilmember Althauser could also answer that. Um, but we use um, standards that are already out there um, and accepted. Um, for low and very low and, and use those in our contracts now.
Are you talking about for housing?
Um, well, we've used them, um. I'm trying to think of examples, but pretty much all of our human services contracts.
I'm confused now. We're taking, we're taking money out of, under that. Whatever it was, principle or whatever, that, that uh, Troy just showed to, to support these other social service things.
And can I jump in and try?
Uh, I, I, I just like to know how we get to that.
So, um. A lot of the programs that we spend money out of on these types of programs, so Chuck, uh, or excuse me, Troy mentioned the. Um, the ARPA funds were specifically oriented around helping people during COVID, and that's my understanding of. Um, one of the programs that we used in terms of the home's first contribution. But. The, the, any, the money that we spend through the community human services program. Is a perfect example of where we're required to ensure that we're identifying. That this is the intent, that, that the intent of those monies is to serve the poor and the infirm. And apologize for the language, it's old language, it's in the constitution, isn't necessarily what it should be uh, today. But essentially, um, we couldn't do the community human services program and spend dollars. Um, on just anybody asking for help with um, a project. Those monies have to be oriented to serve the poor and the infirm. And so we utilize. You know, typically five oh one C three organizations that have um, a, a, um, a model of serving. People in those categories. And then Karen's reference is our contracts then with those people who are taking that money from us. Um, require that they ensure that they're be used, being used for um, these commonly accepted. Standards uh, of identifying what constitutes poor and infirm.
That, that's like, oh, excuse me, uh. That, tha- that's like us giving to, um, you know. What some of our nonprofits in Tom Water, when we. Have our own budgeting of fifteen thousand dollars or fifty thousand, whatever.
Yeah, so, so like the new, the new, the new senior services repairs program that we want to implement. Those are going to have to be um, distributed in the same manager, manner as the community human services program. So we're going to have to demonstrate that we're utilizing those monies. Um, and they are benefiting the poor and the infirm because of this constitutional provision in the state's constitu- constitution. The other, and what gets more confusing is, for example, there are special circumstances. So the CDPG money that we just distributed. That's federal money that comes to the county that we distribute specifically for social services programs. So the, the, the prohibition. Or the um, the limitation in terms of our state constitution isn't, isn't the same. Because we are basically passing money through that's coming from the federal government.
Thank you. That explains very well. Thank you.
I saw that Councilmember Althauser, you had your hand up. I can't tell if he took it down or.
Yeah, I, I took it down. Lee- Lisa, I think, made the point that I was going to make. And the only other thing I was going to add is the MRSC. Has a really good explainer on this too, that uses very simple language that I refer back to all the time. To just remind myself of like, well, what are some of the court cases that have interpreted public purpose? What did the court cases say where? You know, it was a fundamental purpose of the government, or it was donative intent, or it wasn't. And they have a, a nice little landing page with. Hyperlinks to various things explaining this as well. Um, so that's a, that's a good resource that I often avail myself of as well.
That's the kind of thing, though, you do for pleasure reading. I don't uh, I don't be looking up those.
That's true. I print that out and I get a nice fire going in the hearth, and then I, I read it by candlelight. That's correct, Council.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, so why do we have all these laws and rules? And basically it comes down to kind of fairness, fairness to the programs, fairness to the ratepayers, fa- fairness to the taxpayers. Um, and to protect these restricted sources of funds, um, you know, during budget shortfall, so that they. They can't be raided by the general fund or by, you know, one, one fund can't take from another um, for no good reason. Okay, so we're going to shift uh, one more time and get to some nice statistics and graphs and get away from some of these wordy slides. Um, so who's tired about hearing about inflation? I know I am. Um, and this is just a couple of quick, quick charts uh, to make a point. So this is um. A colleague of mine put these together and I borrowed them. Um, and it's getting a little old now, but this shows, you know, how in twenty twenty one, we went from really low inflation. How it really spiked up and now it's, it's coming, it's been coming down, although this shows it going up a teeny bit again. Um, but the, so this is what we expect when we look at an inflation graph and uh, but, but yet we're still feeling. The, the pinch of inflation, both in our personal budgets and uh, at the city. And so uh, this, this chart is to show the cumulative effect of inflation. So. Um, even though the rate of inflation currently is down from its peak, uh, we haven't seen deflation in a lot of cases. So. Um, prices went way up and in, in many, many categories, prices have stayed up. And um, so again, that affects uh, our residents with their personal finances and then it also affects our city budgets. We've talked recently about how. Some of the capital projects that, that we've been doing are costing three and four times more than they used to. Um, so. Uh, that just makes, makes it so that our dollars don't stretch as far as they, they used to. And now we're going to bounce over to the general fund and um. Uh, this is general fund expenses by category and it's, sorry, it's a, might be a little small, but um. You can see police and fire uh, take up about half of the general fund. You can see police and fire uh take up about half of the general fund, uh followed by, by parks um. And streets, um and then a bunch of the support functions. Um and then we can break that down, you know, in a different way by category. And um we can see that the general fund, most of the general fund expenses are salaries and benefits of, of all this. The great staff that we have working, um we also have, of course, other charges for services, um professional services, contracted services. Uh you see the interfund transfers there that we talked about, uh and one note on this. Graph is you'll see capital outlay is just a tiny green sliver at the top that you can barely see. Um and that's because uh for most of our capital projects, we pay for those out of the CFP funds. So the, so thinking, something like the fire kitchen remodel um would get paid out of the general fund. Uh but the big, like the big water main replacement in front of City Hall, um that would either come out of the water fund or the, or the CFP fund. Um the big street, the big roundabout projects, those come out of the CFP fund, so. That's why you don't see a, a great big um chunk of capital projects in, in this graph. So that's, that is all I had for you in terms of slides and I'll stop. Sharing, so I can see if there's any hands up, now we can take any further questions if there are any.
Any questions?
I just, I just wanted to thank you, um Troy, and especially, you know, all this work that comes. These times of the year and um. That's some of the best ways that that could have been explained, I mean, I'm thinking back over the years and I, I appreciate how you presented that. I mean, I. I got most of it, you saw, uh you asked several questions, but uh, you know. Uh thanks for that, and thanks for letting us ask questions as we go along, because I learned also from other people's questions. So thanks.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
And, and I believe we have two more uh classes?
Yes, two more coming up, uh the next one is in just a couple of short weeks at the next work session. Um and that one is um debt, so we'll talk about debt financing. And then um a couple of weeks after that, um maybe, and we might have to reschedule that one, uh because I think I'm at a training conference, but um. Uh we'll also have one of these uh regarding budget, so we got two more coming, and then, then we'll be into full on. Uh budget season for at least on the staff side and um. And then starting in September, we'll start in with budget workshops and uh all kinds of fun related to budget.
Great, well, thank you, Troy, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next thing on the agenda is ordinance number oh twenty twenty-three dash oh one four, proposed amendments to Tom Water Municipal Code. Twelve point three two par- uh public parks and city administrator parks will be presenting.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and please bear with me a moment while I. Try to maneuver my sharing and such, so. Let me see if I do this right. Do you see the parks rules?
Yes, coming up is still not in presentation mode, but I see it.
I'm gonna try and do this presentation mode, do you see the presentation or do you see my notes? Let me see if I can figure this out. In one other manner. Uh, I think I need to go over here. How's that?
I believe that works, yes.
Okay, ooh. Um, okay, so uh this is the first of two difficult topics that we are covering tonight at our work session. And um I want to just acknowledge um how difficult this issue is. Um and that Tom Water is not alone in having to deal with it. Um, we have compassion and empathy for people who are truly suffering, whether by their own actions or circumstances outside their control. Um, we have compassion and empathy for people who are deeply concerned for the safety of their loved ones, um wanting to protect them from harm that may be. Uh caused by others, um and we truly do appreciate all of the people that have taken time to. Provide their thoughts and concerns throughout this process. So our purpose tonight, if I can get the, our purpose tonight is to um give you an update on what. Uh what's happening with this particular proposal, there has been a lot that has happened. Um over the course of time, so um we first wanted to give you a little bit of background, a little bit of a, a reminder as to how we got to tonight. So um there have been changes proposed to the Tom Water Municipal Code, chapter twelve point three two. Um, the General Government Committee reviews, reviewed those proto- proposed changes on November eighth of twenty twenty-three. The council meeting um on the twenty-first of November twenty twenty-three is where we were originally going to be um. Dealing with this uh action and um allowed for public comment, but um took. This particular item off that agenda, um recognizing that there was some significant concerns and we needed to take. Uh a step back and be able to communicate with the people in our community and understand those concerns. So we held a. Uh community conversation at Tom Water High School Commons on the twelfth of February. Um and, you know, the question has come up, why, why did we do all of these things? Um, so the original intent in making the proposed changes to Tom Water Municipal Code twelve thirty-two is. Uh was to expand the current parks rules that govern how people behave in parks. And to apply those uh rules to all of the city-owned properties. So we own some vacant properties, we own City Hall, we own the library property, and currently. The rules that we have our police officers enforce and our city staff enforce to a certain degree in parks. Do not currently apply to any of those other properties that aren't considered parks and recreation facilities. So we were trying to create consistent expectations, um help our staff with consistent enforcement. And to reduce confusion around um how we handled people, um how we managed people's behavior when it came to um activities on city property. So just a brief summary of the proposed changes, um essentially, um twelve point three two. Um um has rules that regulate and in some cases prohibit certain activities such as. Fire, garbage, littering, um overnight parking, camping, use of tents, use of alcohol. Noise, um as well as what they call, um what, what's termed loitering in the nighttime. Um so the idea would be that this summer, these cha- um, these rules would extend. The, the twenty-six rules would be extended to all city-owned property. Um in addition, we were um changing the violations of the code from uh. Being a civil infraction or becoming a civil infraction versus a criminal offense, yes, councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that this is an excellent slide. And explains things well, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh this is a, a very complicated issue. Um with an ever-changing legal framework, and it is again, very difficult and very emotional, and so. Um, we have been working hard to try and ensure that we're being clear about what, what these proposed changes do and what they don't do. Um, so the other reason that we were um uh making these changes and one of the things that the, that the proposed changes do is it helps to confirm. The city of Tom Waters compliance with um applicable federal case law, often referred to as the Boise decision, and so I can. Uh talk about that here in just a moment. So, the, the rules do not change and do not promote establishment of home- homeless encampments. It does not allow people to camp, litter, smoke. Um overnight behavior, all of those rules that are applicable currently, the twenty-six rules in, on, um in city parks. Um, all of those continue to apply, um including applying on uh city-owned property. And none of these changes allow or authorize any type of criminal behavior, um regardless of where you're at. So the other piece, um in terms of trying to comply with what's called the Boise adri- uh, uh the Bo- Boise decision, this is the federal case law. A new section was proposed to the ordinance, to the code, uh twelve point three two point oh six five. And it basically says, as you see here. That uh loitering in the nighttime, so this is the sec- the, the law is on the left side of your screen. Uh loitering in the night time is prohibited, the new section twelve thirty-two oh six five. Basically suspends enforcement of that one section. Where we are dealing with people who are experiencing homelessness. Particularly if there is no space or bed available in a homeless shelter. Um, this suspension of enforcement is only ac- applicable to this one particular rule. So the suspension is not applicable to the prohibition on camping, it's not applicable to the prohibition on fires. Um, none of the other twenty-five rules are suspended by virtue of this language. Um, it doesn't allow people to violate any federal or state criminal laws such as pers- pers- possession, possessing or using ille- illegal drugs. Or lewd contact, uh conduct, these rules only provide authority to regulate behavior. Um and understanding that, every set of circumstances creates a different situation. That involves discretion and dis- decision-making on the part of law enforcement. So uh the community concerns, and there were, there are, continue to be many concerns. Um from our community. Um, there is concern with the um homelessness response and affordable housing. Um maintenance and operations and the safety of city parks, trails and properties. Um impacts on our police and fire departments if they're responding to people who are experiencing homelessness. Um and then there was, there were also concerns in terms of our process, um and whether or not um we had. Um provided enough uh notification and enough awareness um to the community about what we were doing. Um, so there were sixty or more emails beginning in November, um they have continued um even through this week. Um, the public comment uh at the November twenty-first council meeting. There were approximately a hundred and twenty people that attended the community conversation. There were more than fifty feedback forms um that were generated from that community conversation, all of which have been provided. Uh to the council in their packet, um and there were a lot of these different concerns voiced in many different ways. Um over and over, but these are the general themes, um people are concerned about. Uh people and children being exposed to safety, you know, safety risks for people and children in parks, schools and neighborhoods. A concern that we were somehow promoting overnight camping or parking in city properties and particularly in city parks. Um, again, increased costs to clean up um with regard to cleanup or sanitation or police enforcement. And then um just that increased uh crime and, and criminal activity potential. So tonight, we are looking only for some general direction from the council on potential alternatives. So, um. The first alternative that you see on your list, adopt the proposed amendments as current, currently written. That's basically what was brought forward by the General Government Committee at last, uh in last, last November. The second and third all dealt, uh alternatives have been developed in response to comments and recommendations from the community. So the second alternative, which has two um sub-alternatives, are to adopt the proposed amendments, but to um, to. Um modify them in a couple of different ways, which would have the effect of allowing, again. The twenty-six rules that exist in the code to be applied to not only parks but to city properties. So one of the first alternatives under this um action would be, you could delete. That entire section of code, the oh six five, the new language. That was proposed in order to demonstrate that we're working hard to comply with federal case law. Um or you could modify that language, and the next slide that I'll um uh pull up will um. Um, provide you with that language, which um we've developed based in part on people's concerns. The third option is to not adopt any proposed amendments at this point in time, and since we last discussed any of this issue. Um, the federal case law that created the need and the requirement for us to deal with. Those who are experiencing homelessness in this fashion, um the US Supreme Court has heard oral arguments on an appeal of that case. Um and um we are expecting them to make a decision by June thirtieth of this year. And we don't know what that might do to the current legal framework that we are trying to operate within. Uh but it's very likely that it'll change in some way, um and uh. The city would then be subject to additional requirements or different requirements, and, and we just don't know at this point in time. What those would be. Councilmember Kathy?
Yes, thank you. Um. Could you back up a little bit and um? Tell us what prompted uh this, I remember distinctly the night that. Chuck Denny stepped up and talked about this and no one had heard about it before, and I wondered if there was. What prompted it, uh that, and it made it sound like it had just come up or that it. Something had happened that we needed to do this, could you review that a little bit?
So are you talking about what prompted the need for this particular section that causes so much concern or the, the changes in general?
I'm, I'm talking about just that this is, this, this is what was announced, this change uh was announced that night on the twenty-first.
Yes, so.
That wasn't the night, I'm sorry, it was before that, I, I remember that.
Yeah. Yeah, so the general government, it was at the General Government Committee meeting, I believe. That there was some general discussion of this, so. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, Karen's gonna turn her camera on here when I say something incorrect. Um and I, I appreciate that uh from her, but generally speaking, in two thousand and eighteen, the Ninth Circuit Court. Um federal court um found that the city of Grants Pass, Oregon, who ado- uh, uh had adopted a law that prohibited people from. Using blankets or cardboard or anything to protect themselves from the elements. Um that that was um an unconstitutional law. Um because it constituted a violation of those people's Eighth Amendment right, which is a ban on parole and unusual punishment. And so essentially, that federal case law is the environment right now, even today, that we are operating under. Um and that is the or, that is the case uh that generally required this provision that says. You can't do that, you have to let people be, you have to let them sleep, you can't prevent them from using blankets and such. Um if there is no other alternative um uh shelter for them. And so that's really what, that's what we've been operating under since two thousand and eighteen. And in terms of adding the proposed language. We were trying to affirm, affirmatively state that the city of Tom Water was. Attempting to comply with that federal case law.
So what, what, what is the difference? Be- between allowing people to sleep with blankets and cardboard and et cetera, et cetera, and camping? I mean, so that means that quote, you could camp. Overnight in Tom Water and leave the next morning. Is that, is that correct, or um are we saying you can't even do that? Because if you can't do that, we're not um in line with the law.
Right, so the Tom Water Municipal Code that we're dealing with talks about both camping and it talks about nighttime loitering. So, and, and I will defer to Karen whether or not it actually specifically defines what camping is. Um, but um camping is something that is not required to be allowed, right? So we are not required to allow people necessarily to set up a tent. Um to um stay in one place for multiple times. Um, the, the really, the, the issue is that if they're sleeping on a park bench or under a. You know, tree on public property, um a law that says that they can't use uh blanket or they can't use something to. Protect themselves from the elements, particularly when. particularly when there's no other alternative for them, is cruel and unusual punishment, and it's a violation of their Eighth Amendment right. So I don't think that answered your question directly, but that is the nature of this particular issue. It's extremely difficult. And I'm waiting for Karen's face to pop on the screen.
I'm, I'm just asking, what is the difference between? So someone could come and, uh, bring their blanket in their, you know, cart or whatever they're living out of or whatever, and sleep overnight in a park, Tom Water Park, and leave the next morning, and that is allowable?
That is allowable if there is no other alternative place for them to be. So our officers can approach them, they can talk to them, they can offer to bring them to a shelter if there is a bed available. Um, they have the right to say, for example, I don't want to go to that particular shelter because you have to be clean of, um, substances, or you have to be, um, uh, you know, that it's, it's religiously oriented and I'm not religious, so, um, it gets very complicated. But generally speaking, if they, there is no other alternative, we're saying that enforcement of that particular regulation, uh, prohibition against nighttime loitering is not enforceable in that limited circumstance.
Now, those are most of the circumstances. So, so that's, that's why I think that, that there's a question about this because uh, some of the folks who come and want to sleep just overnight and are willing to get up and be gone.
Yes.
They're, 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 they're not shelter people, you know, whatever. So, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's very easy for me to answer the question, you know, from a technical standpoint. Here's what the words say. And, uh, Chief Wicks will tell you, and we all acknowledge that every, and and I tried to say it earlier, every single individual circumstance is going to be different based on what's happening in the moment. And then Councilmember Altouzer, you had a question?
Yeah, so, so in terms of enforcement, or or really, like you could have a law that says that you can't do something like, you know, sleep in a park or whatever. But the Boise decision is, I understand it, essentially means that like the exception means you can't be arrested and prosecuted. Correct? Like Boise is limited to criminal instances of criminality imposed by local ordinances in the form of misdemeanors or gross misdemeanors. But if some of the changes contemplated in the ordinance shift the enforcement penalty from a misdemeanor to a civil penalty, as is proposed in the draft, um, which it, for, you know, i- is a policy that I think makes, that I personally think makes some sense because misdemeanors, uh, have state statutes that impose penalties. If we had a civil fine as a city, we could make more specific parameters around what that looks like. So I think we gain an extra modicum of control if that is a civil penalty, as opposed to a criminal penalty. But if we already change it to do that, and if Boise, which I, I, I'm pretty sure I understand the parameters of Boise, if Boise is just related to criminal, then by changing to civil, haven't we satisfied the Boise decision if the penalty is civil as opposed to a criminal penalty?
Thank you, Karen.
Um, I believe you're correct that that, that would satisfy Boise decision. Um, however, the Grants Pass decision has expanded beyond that to civil penalties as well.
And so Grants Pass is then civil, and that's the case that's before the state, the US Supreme Court, where we're expecting a decision in June, which could do a number of things. It could impact the interpretation of the Eighth Amendment on this circumstance. It could even impact Boise, correct? Like the court could choose to expand it beyond the set of facts that brought it about.
That's correct. They, they could do a wide variety of things, including do nothing. But, but we'll know more in a few weeks. I, the, the language in the, um, draft right now is, um, crafted around Boise and the Grants Pass decisions, um, but it's it, the attempt was to narrowly tailor to whatever may be required by law, so that it's intended to also be somewhat flexible.
Okay. And the language that we have in ordinance right now, strictly speaking, that that language could be out of compliance in Boise, but we have not thus far been litigated against out of a lack of compliance with Boise, which could be for a multitude of reasons, one of which is certainly that w- we have not been enforcing this outside of what is allowed under Boise thus far.
Yeah, I think, um, there are a couple of things, um. Primarily, though, the rules only apply in city parks at this point. Um, if we're to expand those rules citywide to all city property, um, then all of those areas that previous, where the no camping and the no loitering and things like that didn't apply now also fall under the ordinance, uh, which we're calling the park rules. And so that's another reason why this, um, exception language was included in the draft.
Okay, so if we were to adopt changes that imposed the current enforcement mechanism absent Boise compliant language to all city facilities, like the library, for example, or City Hall. And if we didn't change it to add in the Boise language, that could be expanding the city's risk and li- and liability potentially. Because there are additional new targets in which there are instances where we could be out of compliance with what is currently good law.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
So who's making this, this final decision? Who are we waiting on?
Well, so, uh, the US Supreme Court is making a decision on the appeal of the Grants Pass, um, uh, decision. That was, um, the Ninth Circuit Court. We are waiting and hoping to get some direction from the council members tonight on what you would like to do with the particular parks ordinance. And these are the alternatives that we've provided to you. And I can, I can continue on with those, but I think Councilmember Jefferson has a question.
My question is, who determines if there is no other alternative to housing the homeless? Who makes that determination?
Every single incident of contact with an individual is where that decision gets made. Um, there are no, there, there's one self-managed, um, shelter facility in, uh, the city of Tom Water, but I'm not aware that they take, um, that, that, that that's considered an emergency self-shelter necessarily. Um, there are other, um, shelters, beds that are available and every single day, it, it depends on every single day whether or not there is a bed available. So that's where um, every single incident and circumstance requires discretion and decision-making on the part of our police officers. And the attempt, you know, with the ordinance, the ordinance is intended to give them the authority to be able to even get into a position, to be able to have a conversation and be able to discuss with someone and make, make those um, determinations and decisions in each specific incident.
So this, this sounds to, to me that it shifts the burden to our police who are understaffed. And, um, we know the level that they are working in our community. So I would be inclined to vote to adopt the proposed amendments with modifications and delete twelve dot thirty-two dot zero six five. Because, you know, there's no money, this is a nationwide problem. There's no monies coming in, you know, from the federal government to deal with our homelessness problem. If there's a county in Tom Water. So that's how I would vote, hearing that it would be up to our individual police to deal with this.
Councilmember Sorka?
Oh, thank you. So I'm trying to wrap my head around it to try to, um, sip, put it in plain English for myself. So, uh, just for clarification, currently, um, people are not allowed to camp in our parks. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So what we're trying to do, uh, again, is one, comply with Boise, but also two, uh, be able to, uh, so, because people seem to think that we, that we're doing, that somehow doing this will make people able to to be able to camp in parks, but that's not what this is about. They can't do it, even if we make the modifications, they still won't be able to, uh, camp in our parks. And so by doing this modification, then we're extending this to all city properties, not just the parks, correct?
Correct. We're extending the list of twenty-six rules that are outlined in twelve thirty-two and applying that to all city-owned property.
Okay. So again, for people that are listening then, that still are concerned about what's happening in our parks then, currently, they can't, that's not a worry, they, they can't camp there anyway right now. So this is something new that, um, this has always been, um, our, our status as far as parks go. And then I, I'm kind of wondering too then, I mean, I appreciate the, um, all the modifications that were made here, but wondering too about, you know, about waiting until Boise or the, um, the Supreme Court, but, you know, how long, um, will that be, you know? And then, um, and like Angela said too, is, is it, um, you know, we keep thinking about our, um, helping our law enforcement officers that, you know, if we do it now, then, you know, help our law enforcement and then we, do we have to go back and undo every, you know, come up with a modification once the Boise and the, uh, Grants Pass has been determined, the effects, but we don't know when that's going to happen.
Correct. So, so the, the only language that's being proposed to be added to specifically address anything, any question of compliance to Grants Pass or or Boise, the Boise decision specifically is the twelve thirty-two oh six five. There, the, these, the proposed changes do shift, as, as Councilmember Altouzer was talking about, they do shift the penalties away from being criminal penalties and being civil infractions. So that is another effect of these proposed changes. Um, so there, you know, if, if we're trying to protect ourselves from somebody, um, um, indicating that our ordinance is, is violating people's Eighth Amendment rights consistent with the current status of the federal court case law, we could still defend ourselves and say, you know, we're, we're trying to comply. These are just codes, um, this is how we're, whi- which is where we are right now. That's where we are today. Um, with, with our parks. Councilmember Adalha?
Thanks, thank you. One thing I was wondering, and I appreciate this, right? And then my natural inclination is like, if the appeal is going to come out, the decision in a couple of weeks, why not wait till then? And then I also think about, I don't know with your slides, if there's space for the chief to share what law enforcement are experiencing now and what they are, what they would like to request, or do they have an opinion on these alternatives? Because how do we support law enforcement in our community? I'm wondering if there's room in your presentation to hear from law enforcement of what they, what they need from us.
Absolutely, and it's my understanding this was, um, this was from a conversation with our law enforcement officers who are saying, we don't have the authority to do thi- to do this, but I do see that Chief Wicks is, um, in attendance as a panelist and could potentially, um, join us if he's available. Are you there?
I am here.
Okay.
So, y- you know, this is really, I think what you said, um, city administrator parks is really key is, you know, every situation is different. You know, and I don't want to go too far down a rabbit hole, but you know, everything we do is built on prior prioritization. You know, when we talk about homelessness, uh, everything you guys have discussed is exactly right. You know, this is going to be quite a ways down in our response model. Um, you know, if we're available, if all the stars line up, we could come into contact with somebody, just like we talked about this morning on public health and safety. This is about providing us authority, you know, and and our ability to do our job is always based on authority. Uh, and so if, you know, everything happened, you know, the last thing we want to do is for, put or use criminal penalties for our homelessness issue or houselessness issue. Um, you know, we're going to do everything we can to try to help them. Try to relocate them, um, get them into a safer environment or, or whatever it may be. You know, the last thing we want to do is, uh, arrest somebody for something of that nature. So that really, in a broad stroke, is how we would approach it.
Okay. Thank you so much for the conversation. I, I just have a couple of quick slides to finish up and then we can, um, uh, are happy to um, hear the preference of the council in terms of what, what direction we should go. So the, the, we, one of the, uh, sub-options to making amendments to currently what's proposed is to modify, um, section oh-six-five, and these are, this is the language as it would be, uh, proposed to be modified. And essentially what it does is it adds all of the information below the first paragraph, and it qualifies that even if there is no shelter space or beds, there are certain locations where it's not allowable to nighttime loiter. Um, and so, uh, it, it was, this was an attempt to provide some restrictions and provide some measure of, um, comfort, um, for lack of a better word, to the community that expressed concerns about, well, what about schools? And what about kids? And what about conservation areas and environmentally sensitive areas? So, um, uh, this was an attempt to try and address that, to give the council one option, uh, among others, to, um, talk about, um, how we could try to address some of the concerns and move forward with, with some form of an amendment that was specific, um, to the, uh, exclusion language. So, um, the next step again is for, we are hoping to have, uh, council provide us with some direction. Um, help us understand what your preference would be in terms of, oops, I'm sorry, I lost you. Uh, in terms of, um, uh, moving forward with any changes or not moving forward with any changes, if you have, um, suggestions for us, guidance for us.
Uh, Councilmember Von Houts?
I was just wondering, thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering what, if the Supreme Court is able to make, reach a decision by June thirtieth, how long, say, we agree to a modification and then that is contrary to the Supreme Court's decision? How much time does the city have to comply with that decision?
Karen, I don't know if you have a specific thought on that?
I think it's a really hard question to answer, not knowing what their decision might look like. I apologize for the non-answer.
That's okay. I, I'm just, if we make a decision tonight and then it's contrary, and then we have to make another decision, that, that's I don't, I'm not really a fan of continuing to drag this out, but also I, I don't want to make what will end up being a non-decision or the wrong decision.
I do think that, um, and Karen, you can keep your camera on here, because I am going to ask you to correct me right away if I'm, if I'm wrong. The decision on whether or not to regulate the use of city property is not likely to necessarily be affected by this decision. What, i- in, in total, right? So taking our parks code and saying, you can't have a campfire, you can't litter, you can't do all- you can't have a campfire, you can't litter, you can't do all those twenty six things, you can't use alcohol. Um, you can't do any of those twenty six things on city-owned properties. I don't know that that would necessarily be impacted by the decision of the Supreme Court.
I agree with that.
So um and then in terms of the changes to the code that that um move the penalties of a violation of the code from being a criminal or a a a misdemeanor um uh penalty to being a civil infraction may or may not be impacted by what the Supreme Court says, but at some point in time, the city generally has the ability to enforce and um and impose fines for codes and regulations that it sets up.
So the um changes to um the changes moving from misdemeanors from criminal to civil infractions as well as the additional due process language that applies to the exclusion notices is an attempt to to comply with other changes that in law and the direction that the council has desired us to move. Um, when we've discussed the criminal code and things like that, we've seen. So we were attempting to make all of those changes, which also then align with what we've seen out of the Boise and Grants Pass cases. But it wasn't specific to those. Um and so I also don't believe that um those sections of the draft would be impacted um by the Supreme Court decision in the Grants Pass case. I think that the only provision that would potentially be impacted is the um twelve point three two point oh six five suspension language, but even there, it's drafted um. Again, as I've said, enforcement um shall be suspended um if required by law. So again, um an attempt to be flexible um there, but it but the but as I said, we don't know what the Supreme Court might do, so that section could be impacted. But it but it shouldn't, it should not impact the the extension of the twenty six rules from just the parks property to all city property.
Okay, so I don't know who came on.
Council member Kathy was next.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for rescuing me. Um. I I know this sounds strange, but every time we say we're waiting for the Supreme Court, my mind goes to who? The Supreme Court of what? Uh, you know, and if it's the Supreme Court of the United States of America, we could be waiting a a lot longer than the thirtieth of June. So we need to be thinking that uh you maybe they can make small decisions like this, it's just not the big ones, but I wouldn't count on, you know, a time of things from them. The um, the second thing that I would say or I want to ask is um what would you, how would you put together, I read these uh responses that we got from the community. What would you say is the is their main thing? I mean, if we are going to respond to the to the voices of the people in this, what what would we be doing? Do you do you feel? Would we be delaying till there is a decision? Would we be leaving it the way it is? I mean, I couldn't get an exact feel past that just upset and uh that a lot of the criticism was to all of us, so.
The the modified language um that's in the staff report uh was an attempt to address the issues that were raised by the public uh throughout this process. It's also language that's taken from um some other state statutes and some other um Washington cities um and has withstood challenge, as I understand it. So um we we took that um model and that's that's the proposal that's in your staff report.
And they're they're hearing that as though we're expanding the possibility of camping in.
So so uh the overall, the overall perception and um uh of these changes is that it will potentially encourage camping, encampments. Um, you know, RVs parked in park parking lot and park parking lots for extended periods of time. Um, all of those very challenging issues that we've been dealing with for many, many years now in this region in terms of trying to um manage um housing affordability and the people who can't who can't afford other alternatives. Um, there have also been suggestions from people to not adopt. There have been very specific recommendations, very specific citations to the fact that the US Supreme Court, but when we first proposed this language, the US Supreme Court had not agreed to take up an appeal of the Ninth Circuit Court decisions. And so um, you know, that 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 whole thing, that whole specter of information is brand new from when we started down this path earlier last year. Um, and I would agree with you, it is the US Supreme Court. There is, um if this is not seen as a minor issue. This is seen as a major issue largely because the two thousand eighteen decision was such had such a major impact on communities in particularly in um, well, I don't know if it's particularly, but it just had a large impact on communities. So this is really a very big issue around the Eighth Amendment uh to the US Constitution, which doesn't always get a lot of attention necessarily, so.
I just thought it was a small decision compared to complete immunity or something, but um but I do think it's it's a big deal. Well, the Supreme Court goes on uh summer recess, so if it's not done by the thirtieth of June, it's not going to be done until the fall or next year.
That's correct.
Council member Copy.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I'm um understanding this argument, there is a decision that has been awaited at the Supreme Court, but because we want to be proactive, we would like to extend current uh ordinance to city property. And then the other um argument is that maybe we ought to suspend uh twelve point three two point zero six five that provide for exclusion. So if I'm understanding all this argument correctly, uh extending the ordinance to city property, okay. But uh in order to suspend uh F dash three two dash zero six five, you have to have a determination. There's a feedback somewhere. You have to have a determination for man by somebody that says that I am homeless or houseless, and at the same time, there are no uh accommodation available for me for that night. So the mechanism to do that becomes the issue. So I don't know, in my opinion, I think um it would be best if we wait for the Supreme Court decision to be released so that we know what we're doing, so that we're not, we don't have to revisit this issue a second time around.
That is absolutely an option. And um and we are here to answer any further questions or to and and to take your direction. And if there is, if you would like us to prepare a draft set of proposed changes that doesn't include section twelve thirty two oh six five or one that includes um the proposed revision to oh six two five oh six five or or as they are proposed, we would bring those back to another council meeting for consideration, public comment and decision by the council. If you choose not to move forward with any um action um at this point in time, then we would just um put it on a back burner. And um, you know, the the implication of that is then um the current code stands. Um, enforcement remains a criminal process as opposed to a civil infraction process. And um there's question as to whether or not our police officers would have the authority to approach somebody on non-park property that's city-owned. Um, if somebody were doing one of those twenty six things that are regulated or um prohibited by the code currently.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things where is been a disconnect for me of trying to track all of this, right? Is that the Boise decision came down around two thousand eighteen, but this was presented to council in twenty twenty three. The police have been, it was the current state, so they have been abiding by it. So I'm leaning towards, why not wait to the Supreme Court? Because we've been abiding by it since two thousand eighteen. So what's the rush to do it now before the decision comes down? When we've already been abiding by, like, I get the proposals and I appreciate that. I'm just still not make, it doesn't make sense to me. If this happened in two thousand eighteen and it was presented November, October, twenty twenty three, then what is the rush right now when five years went by? That's the disconnect I'm having.
So I'm going to answer that question um as I understand it, um because I think this began before I started in last June. So yes, we have been complying with the Boise decision since twenty eighteen in our interactions. The primary purpose of this code was not to put forth the language that is identified in oh six five. The primary purpose of this code amendment, these code amendments, was to give our law enforcement officers consistent regulations that they were asked to enforce on city-owned property, and that's the twenty six things. You know, no alcohol, no camping, no tents, et cetera. So um and then again, um uh to change the way in which we enforce that code from being a criminal offense to being an infraction. So the rush is not to try and show that all of the sudden after since two thousand and eighteen that we're complying with Boise. The the purpose was to provide the authority for our police officers to get into it, that even get into a situation where they're making having to make a determination and decision. Um, and um and um so Karen is going to modify and add.
No, that's absolutely, that explanation um is perfect. The only piece I was going to add is um under the um city code as it currently exists, these rules for no camping only apply in parks. There was ample other public property available for people to go to. If the parks proposal, the draft is adopted, expanding the park rules to all city property, there would no longer be public property available. And that is the reason why the oh six five escape hatch language was included. So, and as was explained, this was introduced prior to the Supreme Court taking up the Grants Pass case, so we didn't know that they would be hearing argument and ruling on this um at the time that it was proposed.
Thank you, Karen.
Council members, wait up.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for these clarifications. Um I appreciate, I just, I looked up the difference, I'm not a lawyer, so I didn't, I looked up the difference between like the civil law and crim- uh and criminal law, and so it looks, I appreciate that it's that we're looking at it as a civil instead of making it such a harsh offense that it takes it down to a civil offense because it talks about private parties and anyway, and so um so that part I find um like a positive thing. And then I, again, I can see why the um general government had originally um you know, wanted to us us to adopt this because I think it really does clarify things. Um, it's it's easy to get it mucked up and it and um if we continue to wait, I feel like we're still kind of kicking the can down the road, um you know. So I I'm I'm just like, I think in favor of adopting it as modified.
Council member Ralph Housier.
Thanks. Um. I I think there's like several different moving policy questions here. With the the first sort of preliminary one in in my eyes, I think you you said it well, Peter. It's like, should we extend the twenty six things you can't do to all facilities? Like as a as a matter of policy, it makes sense for consistency's sake that you have the same policy to apply to different public facilities. Like there's no fundamental difference between the parking lot of a park versus the parking lot of City Hall in terms of what members of the public should be allowed to do there. Um, or if there is, I fail to see it. So so just from like all all the other issues aside, like should those things match? That makes sense to me from a policy perspective that they do. But then, you know, we get into these trickier parts. Um, I I think that changing it from criminal to civil makes sense for the the reasons I said earlier. We have immense control over what civil fines look like compared to what criminal penalties look like. Also, Boise is tied to criminal penalties, not civil, that's Grants Pass. So I I think we sort of alleviate the Boise problem by shifting it to civil. But I think if we do that now, we have potentially other problems based on unknown events that are forthcoming. Like if we were to extend those things now to those, extend the twenty six things to all their public facilities and change it from criminal to civil, we've satisfied Boise, but we are currently then in violation of Grants Pass. Like Grants Pass, I I don't, Karen could correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe there's been a preliminary injunction issued in Grants Pass. I I believe you still can't issue civil fines for those things as well. So by extending those, I think we actually are extending the same problem that we have currently, which is that the law we're abiding by, which is Boise, does not actually match the ordinance that we have on the books. If we change our laws, our ordinance, so that we abide by Boise, we are then out of compliance with Grants Pass. And we don't have a, we won't have a decision on Grants Pass until June. Um, the the alternative language that was in the packet that says um suspended if required by law, which means like if Boise stands, then Boise applies. I I think to to the degree that we are trying to provide transparency with this, which I agree is a good goal, our laws should be very clear for what they say and do. But by creating sort of this alternative trigger that then relies upon an average constituent knowing case law sounds very tricky to me to be able to read that as an unfamiliar reader be able to comprehend and understand what it does and what it means. So I I I don't love that language that was supplied in the packet either. Um, finally, I I also with two two more quick points, sorry, I'm taking so long. Um, in terms of language around, like if a shelter is available, but Boise, I believe, uses the term um or I I believe it relies upon meaningful access. There's been some discussion here tonight on like, what is meaningful access? If um you're residing, if you're house experiencing houselessness and you have a partner um and you're going into a shelter that does not allow someone of the opposite sex to join you, is that meaningful access? Or if there are religious requirements. In the city of Tumwater, we we have hardly any shelter space at all. We have a few beds. They're mostly transitional. They're not like, we literally do not have an emergency shelter in the city limits of Tumwater. One does not exist. They exist in Olympia and kind of on the border with Lacey, and then it's debatable about whether some of the units in Lacey are transitional or emergency. But we we don't have anything along those lines here. We have more transitional and more permanent supportive housing and a few other types of resources. I don't believe Boise says it has to be in the city limits. I could be wrong about that, but but my my underlying point doesn't isn't related to that. It's more that at some point, regardless of this ordinance, regardless of this ordinance, how we deal with it, like, we have to have a meaningful conversation as a city about shelter and about emergency shelter. Because we have people in the city of Tumwater who are literally homeless and homeless right now. Then we rely upon the better angels of our neighbor cities to house those shelter services that we do not have ourselves here. There are Tumwater residents that get emergency shelter in Olympia and Lacey all the time. And this is a problem that I think we've avoided for a long time. And in part because we have a lot of open space compared to those other cities. So homelessness here hasn't looked like homelessness in Olympia because it's been in a forest. It hasn't been on the stoop of a business in downtown or in someone's neighborhood to the same degree. Obviously, we've heard from people who testified before city council, when we were talking about this in November, that that hasn't been their experience, that they've had very direct experience with homelessness in person. Sometimes Tumwater, sometimes Olympia, and that it was an unpleasant experience too, and we need to hear that and acknowledge it. And also understand that there will be more unpleasant experiences the longer we wait until we take responsibility for having more shelter services in our city. So I I think that that's also a really important thing. We're we're not going to do that with this ordinance, we're not going to do that today. That that is a long term conversation that I think we need to be brave about and have as a city. Because we have to face the reality of of what the situation really is on the ground. So for for now, I do think we we don't know what we don't know, we can't control what we can't control. But I do think that it does make sense to just wait until we see what the Supreme Court has to say for the reasons I've articulated. Like odds are, we're going to have to change more things, like, I think going through this big public process and adopting something and then having to come back within six weeks is not a fun process to put the community through. We've been abiding by the law for quite a while, as you pointed out, Councilmember Dahlhoff. That doesn't mean we can't get sued tomorrow. We might, right? What we have to do is is manage risk as best we can and make the decisions based on our 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 guiding compass to that degree. And I I think that this is prob- waiting is probably the way to have the least impactful public process, the fewest amount of times that bears the least legal risk. So that that's my analysis for this today, and we need more beds.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Councilmember Dahloff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in agreement to waiting like the, agree with Michael and what I said prior, it just for me, it makes sense just to wait and, you know, measure twice, cut once.
So, yeah, okay.
Sorry. Council, Councilmember Swittemann.
I'd like to amend my statement and and agree with Councilmember Althausen, he made a very compelling argument and it makes sense, and so I appreciate what he has said, so. I would like to, I'm with Michael.
Councilmember Kathy.
I'm for waiting.
Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, so what what does it mean for those twenty four things or twenty four items? Are we waiting on that too?
Yes, this would make those waiting, because we're not happy, you know, if we wait for to do this, so that the twenty four things will just only applies to parks and not to any other city facility.
Okay, so we'll just table it until we get that decision, okay? I I I agree with that.
Any other? Anyone wanting to move it forward or? So I'm assuming that I'm seeing most council members wanting to wait until after this decision comes from the Supreme Court. Okay, I see a lot of nodding heads, that's the way we will go.
This is what Lisa wanted because she doesn't, she rarely gets to put something on the back burner.
Exactly.
All right, great, so this will be, we will see what happens with the US Supreme Court and this will probably come forward at some future date. All right, with that, now we're moving to the Davis Meeker Gary Oaktree update and administrator Parks will also be doing this.
Okay, one more time, your patience, please, while I try to navigate. This. Are you seeing the presentation?
Yes.
Oh. Okay. So this is the second very difficult issue that we're briefing the council on tonight. Essentially, we're going to provide a situational overview of the status of in the, where we stand with the Gary Davis, Davis Meeker Gary Oaktree. That is on adjacent to high old highway ninety nine near the Olympia Airport. We're going to describe some determinations and decisions that have been been made as well as next steps, and then we're going to conclude with a few thoughts. So an overview timeline today, essentially. A large branch, about eighteen inches in diameter, fell from about fifty feet above the ground in the spring of two thousand twenty three. It did land partially into the southbound lane of Old Highway ninety nine as well as in the large area between the highway and the parking lot of the historic hangar. As a result of that, the city requested our contracted arborist to conduct a risk assessment. He began that in June. He asked for an aerial arborist to come and evaluate the tree at the point where it had failed. That was also accomplished in June. There was a sonic tomographer who came out in, I believe it was August, to do so sonic tomography at the base of the tree. And then our contracted city arborist provided his risk assessment report in October of two thousand twenty three. That triggered staff to do research around this very unique and singular circumstance. In terms of the tree being on the historic regi- register, register of historic places, a designated heritage tree, and just understanding the implications of the report from the arborist and our next steps and process forward. We initially talked with and brought this topic to the Historic Preservation Commission because it is on the historic register and they have a role in our code to evaluate instances where a property or a building that is on the register becomes delisted. That happened in this past spring, they completed their work. They held a meeting in March at their regular meeting and then concluded their work in April at their meeting, about third week of April. And then ongoing, there's been administrative review around alternatives, situational awareness, and what options and obligations we had in terms of how to manage the current status of the tree and the result of the risk evaluation, the risk assessment that was completed. And that brings us to tonight. So the professional risk assessment, as I described, was completed. All three of the arborists who participated in that risk assessment are ISA certified arborists. They also have a tr- track tree risk assessment certification. There are, I believe, six different types of arborist certifications that are available for people, and in this case, all three of our arborists that conducted this assessment are certified with the same certifications. Generally, the findings are that it does appear that the tree is healthy from the exterior. The assessment also identified that there was significant internal decay and that that in it, because of the extent of that decay, the foundation of the tree was compromised. And the risk assessment found that future failures are likely to occur. Because their future failures are likely to occur and there are multiple potential targets in the area of the tree, it is, it has been determined that the current status of the tree is that it poses a high risk to the public safety. That risk assessment was reviewed by many other arborists who provided their review. It was also specifically reviewed and validated by the city of Olympia's urban forester who has a certification in municipal forestry in addition to the other certifications. And his assessment was that the city arborist and the result of the reports was sound methodology that it provided. It went, I believe, I believe it was stated above and beyond what was necessarily required in terms of a risk assessment and was considered to be a level three and a and a full evaluation that took from June to October to complete. So the city's highest priority is to protect the public's safety. There is significant concern about and a belief that there is a high risk of injury and potentially death and or serious damage if a future failure were to occur with this tree. Understanding that public safety is not the only priority the city has, but it is a significant one. And there is a duty and an obligation that the city has to protect people and to protect their lives, to protect their health, their safety, and also to protect potential damage to property. So the WCIA, the city contacted the Washington State Insurance Authority, they are our insurance company. We had them review the report. We followed up with a phone call. And they did recommend verbally that we remove the tree because of the significant risk that it posed to the public health and safety. So in talking about our determination and next steps, we're going to talk a little bit about the administrative action that has been taken as well as a community engagement process that we are also going to be embarking on concurrent with our administrative actions this month. So there has been a decision to remove the tree. That decision was made administratively after very careful consideration of all of the information received, including public comment. Because of the city's duty to protect the public safety and because of the probability of future failures, it's an administrative decision and determination that the city is required to remove the tree. We've issued a request for proposals from qualified contractors off of the MRSC small works roster. We anticipate that the tree will need to be removed and it will likely require at least one crane, if not two, in order to do that safely and securely. It will require a road closure for Old Highway ninety nine at least. And so we are anticipating that the removal of the tree will likely occur at night and or on a weekend to ensure the highest level of safety and to avoid, to avoid and minimize disruptions and impacts to traffic. In terms of our community engagement, recogn- recognizing that the tree has significant historical has significant historical significance, recognizing that it is important for the community to be able to continue honoring the tree and commemorating the tree. We are looking to in a community engagement process and input from the community to help us understand how we can shift the commemoration and the honoring of this particular tree and the history that it represents. So the community engagement process that we are going to be embarking upon is going to essentially be sponsored through a a joint, multiple advisory board process. We will, we're going to ask our tree board, our Historic Preservation Commission and our Parks and Recreation Commission to hold a couple of joint meetings over the course of the next several weeks. We want them to have an opportunity to think about some of the ideas and the potential strategies that our staff has already been working on and and many strategies that we've actually heard through our public comment. We're going to issue a survey to the larger community that's going to ask them to provide input around some potential strategies. Some of those, the three strategies that we're going to be asking them to provide input on is we've done some initial research and we're able to do some, potentially able to do some roadside interpretation where the tree currently exists. Whether that's public art or a commemorative sign with a parking area, pullout area. There are some options, there's work that needs to be done, but there are some options for doing that. We would like the input from the community on that topic. Last October, our staff, our Parks and Recreation staff collected and planted several acorns, many acorns. Many other others, including our arborists, Kevin McFarland have have gathered some acorns and those are also being propagated and and many of them have already sprouted. So we would like to talk to the community about where they believe we should plant progeny of this tree in 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 providing interpretation around that and being able to say, these trees come from this important tree that was an important piece of our community's history and and the nation's history. And then we would also like to have people provide input on how we could potentially use reclaimed wood from from the tree. The request for proposals has an obligation on the contractor that they work with us to help to take the tree down in such a manner that it maximizes our abilities to use reclaimed wood from the tree. And we would like to have the community's input on that topic. Following a survey, we would have another meeting of the three advisory boards for them to review all of that input and to suggest strategies that might be taken over the course of the next several months and years perhaps to continue to shift how it is that we honor and commemorate this important piece of Tumwater's history. It has been a difficult decision. The city has a strong history of supporting its history and commemorating and honoring its history and and its trees. We have a very robust urban forestry program. And yet we cannot ignore our responsibility to protect people's lives and their health and property. And so we are hoping to work together with our community to find ways to continue honoring the tree and its historical significance in a different and meaningful way. With that, I think the mayor, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Yes, thank you. So one of the, a couple of the points I want to make is that we don't take this lightly. And and that we really honor the tree. I want to also let council know that I've reached out to the Chehalis, the Squaxen, the Nusqually and the Kowals tribes to see whatever significance this tree may have had with the tribes. Because it was on, as noted on the Kowals Trail, so I'm still receiving information back from the tribes, and so they will also be included in this process. Also, just on a, you know, trees are, when they're, when they're damaged can create significant problems. I I had one of my beloved trees in my own yard fall on my roof during a storm in mid-December of twenty, or yeah, twenty, two thousand six. And my next door neighbor almost lost his life with a tree coming. And my next door neighbor almost lost his life with a tree coming through his house in the middle of the night. Uh, so this, yeah, and those were trees that were not even designated as dangerous or not. And our trees in our yard are, I have arborists look at them every few years just to make sure they're still in good health. And, and so even without this type of issue, they're still dangerous. Um, I've just heard many stories of where people are severely injured, permanently injured or killed from trees. And that's just not something that I can, uh, I do not want to face a family that has either lost a, a loved one, a family member or had one significantly injured from, uh, this tree, impacting them on a major route. So, um, I support this, um, decision and I know it's a tough decision and, uh, most people are not going to like the decision, but I think we can move forward on how to best honor the tree uh, and move forward to so that it doesn't, uh, the legacy does not go away. Um, but we honor the legacy of that tree. So. That is what I have to say. So anything else? Councilmember Altus.
Thanks. Um, I, I also just appreciate the, the gravity of the decision and acknowledging that. I think that's important too. Um, I, so, so this is an administrative decision. There's no council vote forthcoming. One is not going to happen because it's an administrative decision based on, and I don't know, based on an emergency, but it's an administrative decision. The council won't be voting on it. Um, but how, how, how do we go about the paying for the RFP? Is that, um, we take that up and end of your budget amendments? Or how does it actually get paid for to do the work if it's not, wasn't already contemplated in our, our budget?
Well, uh, I'm hopeful that Troy can, um, hop on here and, and perhaps provide us with some, uh, specifics with regard to that. But it is an emergent situation. It is something that we need to do. And if we do need to do a budget amendment, we would bring that, um, back to the council at some time in the future. Troy, did you have some, uh, information on that?
Uh, I agree. It's, um, chances are we've, we've got the money somewhere. Um, and on, non-departmental or somewhere, we've probably got the money for it. But if we don't, um, we can come back with a budget amendment.
But by probably got the money, you mean there is an account that has a sufficient balance, um, where we wouldn't have to do a fund transfer? You don't mean that, you know, our savings account only has ten dollars in it or something?
Correct. Yes. Um, right, right now in the general fund, we're, we're looking good as far as the budget. So, um, we could absorb it.
Okay.
Councilmember Dahlup.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm wondering, Lisa, I appreciate that timeline slide. I'm wondering if you could help me understand better where it was presented to the tree board. I know when I watched the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, Chuck Denny noted I had been on the agenda of the tree board three times. So where was that? And also, you know, the mayor noted talking to multiple tribes. Where has that been in the timeline? And also, I appreciate the community engagement slides. Where was the community engagement throughout this process, like a survey and things like that? Like where does that all fit in with the slide that you presented?
So, um, the tree board, I know, had a meeting on March eleventh at which they, uh, talked about, uh, the report. I believe the tree board was given a copy of the report when it first came out. Um, the tree board has not ever had any specific action to take. So that was their, um, um, that was associated with their work, generally speaking, around trees in general. So there was no specific action, uh, or agenda item, but that doesn't mean that they weren't looking at, you know, they've been looking at tree inventories and working on our urban forestry, uh, program and management implementation process. Um, that's, that's kind of a part of their job. In terms of, trying to remember what your next question was.
tribal engagement since last spring to now, when were tribes contacted throughout this process?
I've contact- contacted them in the last few weeks. So within the last few weeks, they've been, you know, brought into the conversation.
And then for community engagement, has there been a survey since last spring of what the community would like to see since this happened last spring?
So the event happened in the spring. The recommendation to take it down didn't happen until the fall. From the fall, from the point in which we got the report in October, we were working on understanding what we needed to do and what the options were. So the, the community engagement process was by virtue of the Historic Preservation Commission. And there was no survey. Um, uh, the survey is intended to provide us with an opportunity to have people provide us input with, how do we now do this since there is this condition that requires us to take the tree down?
Councilmember Kathy.
Well, I'm feeling ill and, um, I'm feeling like some of the things I read that people felt about, um, you know, the whole parks thing, I, I feel like, uh, a lot went on behind the scenes and a lot happened long before we knew anything about it. Close to nine months, you were working on this behind the scenes and, um, and then we heard about it. And my feeling is that you already had made the decision and a lot of this has been, um, to cover up. Uh, the historic, the historic commission voted unanimously uh, not to remove the designation of historic. That should say something. And some of those, um, people who are on that commission are longtime, not only them personally, but generations of their family here who have loved and worked on this tree. Um, and we are disregarding the fact that they voted to keep it a historic monument. So basically, that's, that's what we're, we know that. We, that's what we're, we're tearing down. It's something that is historic and long beloved and taken care of and everything in this community. And I want the people in this community, oh, that, um, this council has nothing to say. We need to understand the form of government we have here. The person designated, person as mayor of this city can make these decisions without the council, which is what has happened here. This decision was made by executive staff in this city to take this tree down. Now, attorneys and people who work in insurance and all of that, they're trained to be risk adverse. And this tree is not dead. And also that arborist said that. There's been no effort at preservation. The first time we heard about it, I said, I prefer that we start with preservation and work from there. Nothing. That, there was not even any need for me to say that because in those nine months or whatever, until we even talking about it in general, this, um, you know, council or community, it was decided. This is, this is not, this is not a good thing. And I want the people of Tomwater to know that I, Joan Kathy, a council member in the city of Tomwater in the year of two thousand and twenty-four, did not vote, approve, or appreciate, or concur with this decision. This was not anything I had any input into. And none of us did. We expressed an opinion that, at the very beginning and it was given hope that maybe we would, um, we're being heard. But, uh, I, I just think this is wrong. I think this is not right. I think this damages our relationship with this community. Um, and also I want to say that, uh, Kevin McFarland, and I can't remember the name of the arborist from, uh, Olympia. They both said that this tree was not dead. They both said that you could take some time and, and, um, you know, work on this and check on it in a year or two years or on and on. And that's in their reports. It's in their reports. There's many things we could do to give this tree a chance to not, you know, lose a branch or fall down or something, but we're not doing that. We, we don't want to do that partly because, insurance certainly doesn't want us to, um, to do that. I just read an article that the great, one of the greatest losses of urban trees is, is, um, people, cities taking them down bec- for public safety reasons that they say they have to take it. They have to take it down. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm disappointed. And I'm angry and I'm extremely sad about it because I think it's one of the most honoring things we've done, um, since, since I've been around. And, uh, the other thing that was in the report is that they're going to take it down and leave part of the, of the trunk, part of it. Because it's, it's going to grow. Because it's going to grow, first of all, um, you know, it's going to grow some sprouts. And then it's going to possibly grow into a bush. And then it could possibly continue to grow into a tree. And I loved what that arborist said. It was the arborist, I believe, from Olympia who said, you know, maybe in the long run, she's just going to outlive all of us. So, in, a, a dead thing wouldn't do that. And so I, I just wonder how we read all these reports as, god dang it, cut it down and do it now. And, um, who cares what this historic commissioner, the council thinks? Not good for the city of Tomwater.
Councilmember Ron Hulz. Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, I want to acknowledge that leaders have to make very difficult decisions that aren't always going to, um, please everyone. And I understand that this decision, um, is not an easy one. I also understand about public safety and I value it. What I don't understand is the timeline. Um, this branch fell in June. There was a risk assessment done between June and October twenty twenty-three. And yet it didn't come before the council in any shape or form until March. And it wasn't early March. Um, nine months went by. Nine months went by. Several windstorms went by and yet the council was never given an opportunity to even know that there was an issue, a suspected issue with this tree or that a branch had even fallen and putting constituents at risk. Um, so that causes me pause. And I just hope that this is a lesson learned in managing expectations and transparency. And I hope that this is not something that we repeat again.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Yeah, this has not been an easy decision. Uh, it's one of those decisions that no matter, uh, you know, it just appears no matter what you do is going to have a consequence. So, um, we will be looking at moving forward. Uh, you know, mentioned that this is still a historic place. The place has not been taken off the, the, uh, historic commission. It's just how we honor it moving forward is going to be adjusted. So. All right. With that, uh, is there, uh, we're at the city administrator, city, uh, mayor report. So I will start with, uh, city administrator first.
I don't have anything further tonight, Mayor.
And I do not either. So with that, we are adjourned, everyone. Thank you.